All right, thank you everyone for joining us this evening. It is 7:31, we're live on YouTube and we have everyone on our Zoom so we can start our agenda meeting for September 15th. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice to the Home News Tribune, the Esberry Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Vios Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. The Board will take final, formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Mara, please.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis-Foster. The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio and video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Sorry, was I mute? You think I should be used to it. Roll call, please, Mr. Mara.
Burns, Ms. Burns. Ms. Burns, I know you're there.
Present, present, here.
Ms. Callie.
Here.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Mr. De Prima.
Here.
Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Ms. Lent.
Present.
Mr. Silikowski.
Here.
Ms. Ellis-Foster.
Here.
Quorum exists.
Thank you. Well, we can all, let me just make sure, we can all stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, everyone. Right? Let me just pull up our agenda. We can go in here. All right, so let's see. Well, we'll have our first ethics corner for next week. Would anyone like to take that? I'm not sharing. There we go, now I'm sharing. Okay, yeah, could I have somebody from the Board?
I'll do it.
Okay, Sal, thank you. All right, next we will have the approval of minutes, which everyone received in their packets. I will check with Dr. Sasso to see if the student representative would like to join us. I know they're trying to get things going at the high school. Mr. Sedidino, do you have any superintendent's report?
At this time, there's nothing for the superintendent's report. That'll be on the formal meeting next Tuesday.
Okay, great. And I'm going to assume with that, any kind of progress towards goals, which we'll talk about our new ones this year. Mr. Mara, are there any correspondences?
No correspondence.
We don't have any special committees at this point, so we will go right to securing of the residents on any agenda item only. I'm going to, once again, just pull up how to, there we go, how you can either call or just raise your, try to do it again, raise your hand if you would like to, if you have a comment on anything that is on the agenda. If you, this is anything on the agenda, if there's a topic that you have that's not on the agenda, that will be part of the session, the public comments section at the end. So we do have those two opportunities. So if there's any comments on any of the agenda items, if you're on Zoom, if you could just raise your hand. If you're on the phone, if you, you can call in and just hit star nine. So I'll give it a second if anybody has any agenda item questions. I'm going to give it one more minute to see if anybody called. I don't see, I think I got a raised hand. Okay, all right, Mr. O'Neill, I see you raised your hand. I'm going to unmute you. You should be able to unmute yourself, Mr. O'Neill, and you should be able to talk at this time.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out the draft.
Mr. O'Neill, can you just talk a little louder? You're a little low.
Sure. The draft agenda is not on the website. So usually it's posted before the meeting and taken down after the meeting. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew that.
All right, great, thank you. Let me see if we can get that up. Okay, yeah, let's see, we can see if we can get that up. Thank you. I know the action items are out there. All right, great, so nothing right now, we'll go back to the agenda. Here we go. All right. First thing on the agenda, we do have the second reading for a number of policies. Anyone from the Board have any questions on that? Okay. Next, we have curriculum, excuse me, and professional development, one through four. Anyone, any questions, concerns? Okay. Okay, actually, I just also did receive an update. If you refresh your browser, the agenda is on the website now. Okay, so nothing on curriculum. Next, we do have an item to vote on. Athletics has one through three, however, we're voting just on number one this evening. If I could have a motion for athletics, number one, please.
Callie, I'll move.
Callie, thank you, a second, please.
A second.
Lent, thank you. Okay, great. Roll call, please, Mr. Mara.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
And Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, any questions on athletics two and three? Next is finance. There's 10 things on finance, but this evening we are just voting on items number one and two. So if I could have a motion on those two items, please.
Ms. will move for items one and two.
I will second items one and two.
Mr. Dunn, thank you. Okay, great. Could I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mara?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Thank you. Any questions on the remaining items, three through 10? All right. Right now, we have nothing in for non-certificated personnel office or non-certificated personnel So we shall move to non-certificated personnel, other items, one through three. Any questions, comments from anyone on the Board? Great, great. Next, we shall move to certificated personnel. We have one and two. There's 11 altogether, however, this evening just voting on items one through two. So if I could have a motion on certificated personnel, one and two, please.
Carol, a motion?
Carol, thank you, can I have a second, please?
Lent, two, a second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, we have a one retire rate, 33 years at Glenn School Psychologist, 33 years of service, and I will mention that next week.
Great, thank you, Mr. Silikowski.
Okay.
Anyone else? No, good, okay. Mr. Mara, roll call, please.
Ms. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
I am abstaining on item two of letters B and C, otherwise, yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, pass.
Thank you. Okay, just confirming, no other comments on one through 11.
It's actually one through 18, Ms. Ellis-Foster. There are two elevens, Ms. Torrey.
Oh, yeah, that's eight, it's okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Port. Okay, we'll make sure we'll fix that one. Next, we have non-certificated personnel transportation. Any questions, comments? Next, supplies, equipment, and services, one through three. Any questions, comments?
I'll just make one comment on the change order on number three. Over the summer, we did a major boiler replacement project in Cooper School, and during that process, it was determined that the hot water heater in the building need to be replaced. So that's what the change order is, it's about $6,000. It'll be, it'll be on the agenda for voting next week.
Okay, great, thank you. And we expect stuff in number one and two also next week?
We always expect stuff there, but as of now, there is nothing there.
Okay. As we know, we can make all the difference lately, so I won't assume anything. All right, great, thank you. Transportation, one through three. On two, miscellaneous, one, two, three. Any questions, comments? Then we can just confirm, we got everybody right on the meetings, if there's any issues and this is, just let me know. All right. Nothing there? Okay. Next is Board Business and Secretary of Business. And again, just more so for the public, and over the last couple of weeks, the Board and the administration met, and we developed our goals, our district goals for the year, which I think we did talk about in our last meeting, as well as the Board goals. If you, we run through them as our overarching district goals, relatively the same as far as our three major initiatives of excellence in education, where we will continue to enhance innovative educational opportunities for all students in accordance with the needs of our student and our strategic plan. Fiscal resilience, because it's always, money is always in the forefront, is to continue to evaluate options to improve financial reserves due to significant decrease in state aid, and continue efforts to educate our stakeholders on the district's financial situation due to the significant reduction in state aid, because we do anticipate to continue in next year, in the 2021, to again have state aid cuts. And then, you know, as always, our focus on the whole child, and to continue initiatives to address students' physical, social, and emotional needs, and instill practices that eradicate bias and discrimination from our learning community. So we will codify those and vote on those next week. And then the Board itself also has goals. So while we, you know, develop overarching and we rely on the administration to implement the district goals, as a Board, you know, we try to find things that we can do. So we are going to work towards achieving a status of master board with the New Jersey School Board Associations, which is a two-year endeavor. As of tomorrow, we have, I'm sorry, Thursday, we have one more meeting with our school Board reps, and we've become classified as a certified Board. And really what that means is that the Board members and the Board as a whole is doing continuous professional development ourselves as Board members, so we can continue to do the best job we can. So that's more really is our professional development as Board members. We want to continue to support district and community events, whether virtually or in person, and we're hoping more in person than not. We will continue to embrace cultural diversity at our Board meetings that is reflective of our community, and so we'll probably start seeing some more of that next week, or next month, something we started last year. And I'll just mention briefly this last one, which is a new goal for us, which is to encourage two-way communication between the Board and the community. And so we did hear, you know, we've heard people that they would like more two-way communication, so we're looking at opportunities that the Board can have better communications with, with the entire community. We know we meet with certain groups, such as our President's Council, so that is something we're starting, and look to the public for any ideas they have or recommendations that they would like to see the Board participate in from a communication standpoint, the things that we can do. I don't know if anybody else from the Board or the administration has any comments on our, either the district or Board goals? Okay. Not seen any yet. Okay, so anyway, we will, you know, vote on those next week. So, well, that was the agenda. So now we are going back to public comments. So this is the opportunity to, for the public, for any comments on any school board evening, I'm sorry, any school board item or issue. So again, to speak, if you want to either, you're on the phone, if you hit star nine, and if you're on a Zoom call, if you just raise your hand, use that little icon there, and we will give you, it will open your mic for you. So just wait a few minutes, because sometimes people just need to do, okay, see Heather? Okay, so let me see, all right, Heather, when I, you'll be able to unmute yourself right now, you can just state your name, and then if you unmute, you'll be able to talk. There you go. Hi, Heather? I see you're unmuted, but we don't hear you. Oh, is that you? Heather?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, you're a little low, could you just speak up a little?
Michelle?
I'm trying.
Shut my sound down.
Heather?
I'm here, can you hear me?
You're very faint.
I'm in a headpiece, I'm not sure if that's why. Let me try to move, if you, I'll put my hand down in case anyone else, so I can try to solve my audio with you.
Okay, all right, I'm just going to unmute you then. Okay. Okay, we're going to wait, hopefully Heather can figure that out. If anybody else, again, if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine. If you're on Zoom, if you want to just raise your hand. Okay, hey, oh, I see Noel, hang on, Noel. Okay, Noel, you should be able to unmute yourself. There we go.
Hi, thank you. When will parents be notified when our children can go back into the school buildings? And will special education children be, is there a plan to get them back in the school buildings as soon as possible?
I will adjust the, the plan that we have currently and that we submitted to the State is for October 12th, to be our reentry date into Phase Two. Our team continues to work towards meeting that goal. The information, your request to look at the possibility of having, or having special needs students brought into the schools as soon as possible, something we continue to discuss, we wanted this for all students, and, you know, especially our elementary students. And we look at that as a committee we met today. Some questions were raised, and we're going to meet again this week, just because we want to try to get as much information as possible to be able to make the most informed and decision that, you know, not only provides our students with the structure they need, the education they need, but is done so in the safest manner possible.
Okay, good, Noel?
Is there a date to notify parents? When, if the October 12th date is going forward, when will we be notified?
If the October 12th date is changed or later, you'll be, you'll know as soon as
Anyone, anyone else? Okay, all right, Heather, let's see. Okay, Heather, you can unmute yourself, and you should be able to speak. Heather?
All right, I, can you hear me through this directly?
I mean, I can hear you very faintly, I don't know, we could, I can, we could try to do this, and I could try to, like, maybe repeat what you're saying. We could try that.
Can I just put it in the chat section?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
All right, thank you.
Ms. Ellis-Foster, I also see some comments in the chat session. Should we recommend that they try to call in, or?
Yeah, I think it's the best that they call in, because then their, their point is clearly...
We can address some of them in their chats while they're there, though.
Yeah, because, I mean, I don't know if everyone can see their questions, though, just us.
Stacy asked about, with, with related arts in elementary schools, you have the option to opt your children out of some of those related arts if you think the screen time is too much. If you are having, you should be able to do that through your child's teacher and/or principal of the elementary school. If you're having additional concerns with that and those needs aren't being met, then I'm going to, to send an email to Dr. Tui's intention, since he heads up academics, and you can copy myself and Dr. Hofer on it, so we make sure that someone hears that concern. She also wants to thank the teachers for all their hard work, and comments that also having live meetings with kindergartners for that length of time is, is difficult. We agree with you, and we, like I said before, we met as a team. Our, our stakeholder committee with, that's a task force, we ran your task force, we meet regularly, and we met today with that goal in mind. Every goal is, every meeting is to get back to our, our students in as soon as possible when safe, and we have the October 12th date as our starting point to get everyone back and have everything we need to get to Phase Two. Ms. Brooke Patterson asks, why are the schools closed? The schools are on remote instruction because the governor allowed for schools to start with the remote or use remote instruction. The stakeholder committee, the task force, looked at that as an option, looked at various dates as to when they felt that they would be safe for the students to reenter into the schools, and voted on October 12th as a, as a date to use based upon air quality concerns, staffing concerns, and communicate, concerns with community spread of the virus and having gotten down. The committee voted upon that, everyone took place in that, that vote, and it was a majority vote of the committee to choose October 12th. So all committee members had an equal say, state in that vote, so, and their suggestions are heard, and any suggestion that was brought up today was heard. And we see Ms. Heather G. is back on. I think Dr. Tui's reaching out, you, I'm not sure what that responds to that question to, is the one about the opting out of, of related arts or, or another item, Dr. Tui, but?
Yes, if you have a, you want to amend your child's IP, or you have a concern about an IP issue, you could contact your case manager, and your case manager can set up an annual IP meeting if you are requesting one.
Yes, okay. And with, Ms. Christine Romer brings up that in the past three weeks, Old Bridge communicals spread has gone up. We have had 10, 19, and now 50 in the past week, cases going up in, in Old Bridge. Right now, there's 27 young people as a concern between age 17 and 20 who have tested positive, and a four-year-old tested positive within the community. So obviously, these are things we have to look at and think, something that was discussed today in our committee meeting. One of the reasons why there's a delay is a delayed opening into opening October 12th or having in-person education starting October 12th to see what the data brought us as schools around the area started reporting. So that was very, you know, information we definitely looked at, because it's alarming when you see our schools aren't even in for in-person education, and to see a spike in young people is really a concern.
Okay, Mr. Sedidino, before we go back to the chat, can we go to the people who are calling in?
Sure.
So I see two people who are calling in, I'm going to, I'll unmute them in the order they came in. So the person whose phone number is 7182, I'm going to unmute you, and if you can just state your name, and then you, you should, oh, I should unmute you, there we go. Trying to. If phone number 7182, you're muted, if you can unmute, you should be able to speak. Oh, there we go, yep, you just unmuted, yeah.
Hi, sorry, thank you.
That's okay, no problem.
I feel like that's been the past two weeks. Hi, my name is Fran, I'm actually a parent of a kindergartner who is in a general ed class with special services, and I'm sure many of you have been hearing about, you know, obviously, it's been a difficult for these little ones. Is there any plan, if it's not now, or if it is the October 12th date, that any of the services can be, I know it's going to sound crazy, but can they be where there may be the, the teachers travel, like, to the students, or that's, or like some type of a plan like that, because the Zoom sessions are extremely difficult? And then trying to, you know, trying to have the kids focus from, you know, YouTube sessions online, or like looking at their teachers all day, and then jumping into a therapy session is a bit much? Is there any plan with, to... jumping into a therapy session is a bit much. So is there any plan with potentially any more of like the one-on-one or in-person therapies at all?
When we do get back to the hybrid model, the goal is to have a mixture of in-person therapy and hybrid and remote therapy as well. That would be a discussion that you would have with your, your case manager and your related service provider. As of right now, all the related service providers are providing related services remotely due to our current situation. But when we do get back, we will make every effort to provide as much service in person as the related service providers will be in person for that half day. And then we're looking at creative options at the second half of the day to potentially also work with students there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was unmuted. Okay, so I do see another person on calling in. Oh, we have two more people. Oh no, that was you Fran. Okay, there was, there's another person. So I'm gonna lower your hand. There we go. So we have another person with a phone number of 5719. Let's see, okay, 5719, if you can unmute and just state your name, you should be able to speak.
Hi, good evening. This is Matthew DeFranco. One question I did have, it was kind of a follow-up to the item that was first, can everybody, you can hear me correctly?
Yep, we can hear you good. Thank you.
It's a follow-up to one of the questions I think earlier asked is, I think what we're trying to get across is as to the October date of the 12th going back, is there a point in time before that that a call will be made to say it's a go or no? And then secondly, as far as the going back to like the cohorts, has there been any modifications to the plan now that we've been for the first month be going live and it'll be kind of somewhat of a disruption to kind of the class function of going from everybody working with their teacher to then having the cohorts with aspects of the teacher being in person for some days and some people being fully remote. Thank you.
I will say that, you know, for the 12th, that is our, our goal date and if something would change in that date, you'll be notified. But that's the date you should keep in mind. As for, you know, having data for or moving with the month, we've only been at school for today exactly a week. Today is the, the one week of remote learning. And again, it's the same as the surrounding communities from us. So looking at the data and looking at the impacts it's had on schools is something we can continue to do. But, you know, when you're looking at something even as a community spread and the, the virus with, it takes 14 days to be, I guess, take it, take care of itself, it's running itself of course through the body to exemplify symptoms or become symptomatic in some cases. You know, a week's time is not enough data time to have that point of, to sharing that. So we're looking at that information. We're looking, more information, we'll meet as much as possible to make any sound decisions going forward. There's a question in the chat about, you know, we're never going to keep COVID out of schools. But kids are, and adults can thrive and healthy adults can thrive and children can thrive. I can't disagree more. It's my job to keep COVID out of school as best, most as possible. That's something that the Department of Education, the Governor's Office has charged the administration with. So much to say that if after two cases or more, two or more than two cases are present in a school of any size that I, I have to close the school. So, you know, it is something we're responsible for and we take very seriously. We just can't say that we're gonna just open the schools and let COVID run through the schools. It's the same as any other. We have the same protocols in place for any other of, of the viruses that we track through the health offices in our schools.
Thanks. Okay, so I see Heather might have gotten her audio. So I'm gonna try this one more time.
Can you hear me this time?
There we go. We can hear you. Very good.
It's only working on my phone. All right, we'll go from here. Thank you for addressing my first question. That was probably my simplest, so I figured I'd go with that one first via chat. Now, my biggest concern is I have three children in all three of the school levels. And while I'm not opposed to the current plan, it's not exactly working for everyone. And I know it's hard to make it work for everyone. But I wanted to know if there's any plans to amend, say, the amount of time altogether in the day. I know that I emailed Mr. Sodino, so he's probably already going through some of this. But I have a first grader who cannot sit still for the amount of time. And I'm sure it's the same for all the little ones, pre-K through probably two or three. For the amount of time it is for the entire day. And I know that we're trying to mimic a school day as much as possible. But I feel like some of it really could be compressed. Maybe to end at a later lunch period instead of an hour lunch to possibly figure a way around maybe adjusting the class time periods by even say five minutes per period, maybe just for the younger ones or altogether. Where maybe it could go until one and then done for the day versus so many breaks. Because I have, I, I work from home also. So I'm between helping them and sitting on top of my first grader, making sure he doesn't run away. So I'm not sure if there's any plans or if there could be something to adjust the amount of direct meeting time for the younger group.
Well, we're gonna, we have, like, I've said since the beginning, we have two teams that work on that. We have a remote learning team. And we have a reentry team. Reentry team's major goal is to look at data, look at information needed to reenter our schools in the safest manner possible and develop alternative methods to when you can't reenter as we normally would be able to. The remote team looks at our remote instruction and tries to provide and has a lot, a lot of teachers on that group, teachers in district, teachers out of district, teachers who are obviously parents. And gets a lot of their expertise on how we're doing with the remote learning, obviously from the parents as well. And tries to amend and adopt that. So we'll continue to work with that group and make adjustments as possible. And where, where needed, based upon the feedback that we get. So, you know, if you're, if you're sending the feedback into me, I've been telling people that, you know, thank you for the feedback you receive, you, you're sending me. And I then share it with the committee that it pertains to, whether it's reentry or remote learning. So we can look at that information then and then amend it. I, I get it. I understand 100% that, you know, third, kindergarten student, first grader, in second graders, it's difficult for them to sit there with the, the, the live instruction via the remote learning. It, it's heartbreaking that we have to be in this situation. When we looked into balance, what is the, the best situation when you're looking at, you know, health concerned, life and death situations, educational experience, educational situations? You want to do what's best and we're gonna continue to monitor that and adjust where we can.
As long as there's something that is at least being reviewed, that's my biggest concern. It's very hard and there are some of us that did opt for a remote period, so we'd probably stay. So as long as there's going to be adjustments and hopefully sooner than later, I understand it will happen in a week, but I'll leave it at that for now and we'll see where it goes and also obviously wait for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll be back next week, so don't worry.
Foster, I just want to add that, you know, we did talk today and we are working with our teams to establish a survey and send that out to, to collect additional data. We didn't want to send it too soon. We'd like to be in school at least a week. And give the students an opportunity for a full week of school and get that feedback about what's working, what's not. You know, what can we do better? What, you know, what things are in place and established?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hofer. Okay, we have another person wanting to speak. So Ms. Fornier, I hope I got that right. If you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Yes, hi. My name's Sarah Fornier. I have two kids in the school district, both have special needs. My question is kind of twofold. The first question is about, is concerning IEPs. I was told by my daughter's case manager that the IEPs could not be modified during this time until we get back into school. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. What parents have opted out to in some circumstances, if they did not want, for example, related services provided via a remote setting, parents were sending emails to case managers opting out of the remote related services, and this is just one example. And the IEPs would not be changed because if we come back on October 12th in person, ideally at some juncture throughout the year, be 100% fully back in session. Then the services as outlined in the IP would be what the district would be responsible for based on previous IP meetings. So if you're looking to have a adjustment to your IP, you would ask your case manager for an IP meeting and adjust your concerns there.
Okay, my second concern is regarding when we get back into the school. Both my older child has three services and if, you know, and I chose to go hybrid, so she went back and she was only going one day a week, she'd have three PT, OT, and speech all crowded up in one day. Is that? I, that's not, I, I don't find that to be acceptable, especially since it would not give her, it would not give her the same class time as her non-disabled peers. What can, what can we do about that?
I stated earlier that the, during the days that students would be in session, related services would be provided both in person where possible, in conjunction with the related service provider, and it would also be provided remotely. There's no way to receive a four, three or four or five related service sessions, which is what some of our, our students do need as, as outlined in their IP. If they are in school for one day, whether they're in an ICR or resource pullout setting. So therefore, we work with the parent to try and set up a schedule where it was reasonable where the student would have some of their related services in person, but the other remaining related services would be provided remotely.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thanks. Okay. Just looking to see if anybody else has a hand raised. Did, did we get all the questions on chat? I've been monitoring. And Mr. Sodino, I think you've been looking at that.
You're muted.
Oh, Mr. Sodino, okay.
I think there's a question that was in reference to HP Streams that maybe it's Wi-Fi issue within the home. I know there's one parent who'd reached out to us today and I, I then asked, I just sent the emails to our new tech supervisor to see if that is someone, we're working with Altice to do Wi-Fi assessments when our Wi-Fi is available to them. And if not looking at that, then if it were possible that we could provide hotspots in, in certain areas. That can be a, a situation that we could look at. We're looking at grant support for that as well. So if the parent reaches out to us with that concern, then definitely we could look at it. I was even going to contact the parent that reached out to me today to see, you know, bring a hotspot over there to see if that would help rectify this situation. So we'll, if that's the parent we're talking about, we'll look at that tomorrow. And if there's a need for hotspots or Wi-Fi, we're definitely working towards that. Any continuing circumstances or situations or questions that we are relying on Wi-Fi, direct them directly to our OB techs and you can copy me on it as well to make sure that it's being, attention is being taken to that concern.
Can you just clarify? I'm sorry if I, I missed it. I know we were doing testing on enabling the hotspots within the devices provided by the district. Has that been done and have we activated those yet? I'm sorry, you said that.
No, we, Altice is still working with us on doing that. We had techs from the, from the township working in various locations throughout the town, like going with HP Streams to random areas on the largest part of a perimeter to make sure that we can, we can reach all of our students that we serve prior to switching it on. And we should have information about that in this week's update.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, okay. All right, Heather, I'm gonna give you one more bite at the apple because you had some issues, but let me, if you want to unmute yourself, you should be, oh, did I get you?
Hello?
Oh, well, maybe I hit the wrong person. All right, well, this is at 7325. Did you have a, did you have your hand raised? I'm sorry.
I, I had my, I, I had a question earlier, but the second part of it wasn't answered. As to is there, has there been any changes to the go back live on October 12th due to the fact that we're it was originally made based on us not going 100% virtual at the beginning and there now being the potential for disruption in kids being with every, with all their classmates live with their teacher and not being that once they go back to the cohorts.
Can you rephrase that? I was, I kind of lost.
So the cohorts are once, obviously if, if parents have chosen to go into the cohort and go in person for the one day a week, they'll be going one day a week. So the teachers will be teaching potentially three days a week for the in-person students. However, right now, they're teaching every single student all at once. Has there been any modifications to the, you know, reentry plan based on the fact that you're now gonna have to break up the, break up that, break that up based on the fact that they're going all together now in their class and now and once October 12th, if that date can be achieved, they won't be, they won't be, the teachers won't be able to do that unless there's a change that.
Right, so I understand, I think, you know, it's like the, I guess, you know, while remote learning is not optimum for everyone, it does provide greater continuity of teacher having engagement time with every student. Whereas the, the hybrid plan has less of that and interchanges between live instruction in person with remote asynchronous and synchronous instruction. So I guess that's your question. So we did discuss that administratively, not as part of the remote learning team. That would be remote learning team kind of discussion. And just taking some of the feedback we have and some of the feedback we're gonna get from the server we're gonna send out. We will review that prior to October 12th.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. All right, thank you. All right, let's see. I am not seeing any other hands. I guess I would just reiterate, you know, we know there are concerns. But if you do have ideas, concerns, questions, please forward them either to your teacher or Mr. Sodino because, and he enjoys it. But, you know, there are certain ones that if it is a question specific to your child, it's better to go to the teacher. If it's something else, your building principal or the administration. So do not see any other raised hands or, or calls now. So I thank everyone for their questions. So at this point, we will close, I believe though, and I believe we've got everything also in chat. So we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And we'll move on to old business. Any?
Kelly, well, I have, Kelly, I have something. It could either be old business or new business, but the rules and the regulations have changed in terms of meal distribution. And I suggested all the parents take a look at the website because effective tomorrow, we will be able, we will start to distribute meals, breakfast and lunches for seven days a week on, on Mondays and Wednesdays. And it is available to each and every student in the school district free of charge. And that policy will be in effect until December 31st.
Could we send out an alert on that?
We already have, yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any old or new business? None? All right. So we have to go into a closed session. Mr. Parton?
Yes, closed session for personnel and attorney-client privilege.
Yes, closed session for personnel and attorney-client privilege.
Oh, okay. I was waiting for something else. There's usually, okay, great, thank you. And we will not be coming back out to the public. So if I could have a motion to go into closed session, please.
Lynn, to move it?
Can I have a second, please?
Kelly, a second.
Just Kelly, thank you. Okay, so now we will be closing the meeting. Thank you, everyone, again, for your questions. Again, we do have another meeting next week and again, please reach out to anyone if you have questions so we can continue to, to get your feedback and continue to work together in, in doing the best we can. So we appreciate everyone's patience in this, so everyone have a good.
Kelly, we just, we just need to vote on the closed session, so all in favor?
Oh, sorry. Aye.
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 Closed. Okay, we're going into closed session at 8:21 PM.
Thank you.
Nine.